Call a meeting to order for town council meeting for June 9th at 6:30 PM. Please rise for the invocation from Joan Minor from East United Church of Christ and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Anybody here from?
I don't see her.
Chief, you want to lead us in the invocation, please?
Let's have a moment of silence. Thank you. God bless the town of Maryville.
Amen.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Guernsey.
Spann.
Present.
Hardaway.
Yeah.
Miano.
Here.
Barron.
Here.
Pettit.
Here.
Whiting.
Garache.
Here, present, uh, six present. Etits, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstration. Uh, the first one is for the Ross Township trustee for the waiver of fees regarding the remodeling and of the maintenance of the fire service building at 26 West 73rd Avenue.
So moved, Mr. President, with the condition that the inspector fees are still paid.
Second. Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mr. Hardaway for the approval of the waiver of the fees in your second stance with the inspections of.
Yes.
They would have to pay for the inspections. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries. Large gathering permit for the Grecian festival?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mrs. Barron for the approval of the large gathering permit for the Grecian festival. Is there anything on there added that I need to know about? It's the same.
Same thing we've had before, chief. We've got enough?
Yeah, we got security lined up. Should be good to go. They're compliant, they sign off on their, uh, outdoor permit.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda, accounts payable, registered voucher, approval for June 9th, 2015, approval of town council meeting minutes for May 26th, 2015.
Motion.
Motion by Mrs. Miano.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pettit for the approval of the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Standing committees, budget and finance, Mr. Pettit.
I don't have anything, Mr. President, unless Mr. Spiers or Mr. Guernsey do.
I don't.
I don't.
I don't have anything tonight.
Seeing none, uh, Public Works, Mr. Spann?
Oh, I don't really have anything, but I'd like to comment on the patching that's being done by Public Works. I think they're doing an excellent job.
Anybody else in the Public Works? Seeing none, council affairs, Mrs. Miano?
Uh, yes, we would be updating some of our ordinances with increased language and fees and fines if applicable. Also, Councilman Hardaway requests for grass cutting ordinance.
Yeah.
For occupied resident's home is being researched and created.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to walk in something. It's a junk peddler's license required. Like the next workshop available, discuss this, make some changes.
Sure.
You want to come?
Carol.
Anybody else in their council affairs?
Yeah, I've got a question.
Sure.
I, uh, guy stopped me today and I don't know, either Bruce or Attorney Bashimi can answer this. Uh, he repairs cars unfortunately in his driveway and in his garage and he got a ticket. When he went to court, the judge told him that whatever he does inside his garage is permissible, but once you get five feet outside of his garage, then that's a problem. And I, I need to get a definite answer for that because I think any place that you repairing cars and you're not licensed to do so, or it's not zoned for that, then we shouldn't permit it.
What's our, uh, list of home occupations?
Well, uh, I want to defer to Durinda.
No, 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 stop.
In a, in a residential use district, uh, repairing cars for profit, even in your own garage is not a permitted use, is it?
Well, then somebody needs, it wasn't Judge Jones, it was somebody that was sitting there.
Have you approached him?
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna have.
Probably just not familiar with, uh, that aspect of the zoning ordinance, but, uh, that is, uh, that's an accurate interpretation of our zoning ordinance because it's, uh, in a residential use, you're only supposed to conduct residential activity.
That was my understanding.
Uh, you can't conduct a business for profit inside the home either unless it's permitted under our zoning.
I understand, but that's, the guy told me that and I figured that this is the best venue to, uh, ask that question. Alright, then we'll, uh, we'll address it from there. Thank you.
Anybody else? Personnel, employee benefits, uh, Mr. Pettit? No report. Public safety, Mr. Whiting? Anybody have anything?
I have one letter that I would like to read, please. It's dated May 14th, 2015, to Chief Joseph Petrush from Commander Kajerna. The subject is accommodation case 2015-0779. I would like to recognize Officer Lance Schmidt and Officer Ian Foltz for their involvement in the recent arrests of an armed robbery suspect. On May 9th, 2015, at approximately 9:30 AM, Officer Schmidt observed an individual run out of the door of Peachy's Apparel, 65E 73rd Avenue. This individual then sped off in his vehicle eastbound on 73rd Avenue. Both Officer Schmidt and Officer Foltz decided to follow this vehicle. A few minutes later, dispatch advised that an armed robbery had just occurred at Peachy's Apparel. Dispatch also gave a description of the subject and the sub, uh, suspect which matched the individual they were following. Officers Schmidt and Foltz were able to stop the suspect vehicle and take their suspect into custody without further incident. The suspect was positively identified as a store employee and later charged with armed robbery. The alertness and outstanding investigative skills displayed by these officers led to the arrest of an armed robbery suspect. For their efforts, I would like to award Officer Schmidt and Officer Foltz a level two accommodation. Respectfully submitted Commander Kajerna with side notes of outstanding police work from Chief Joe Petrush. That is all that I have.
Do we need a second? I'll second.
Okay, just a letter.
Okay.
Anybody else in their public safety? Seeing none, Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Miano?
Okay.
Seconded by, in our local agreement with Butler Fairman for the contract approval for the construction inspection services for the CNO Trail Phase 2. Bruce?
Yes, everyone's got a, got a copy of it and it's the LPA consulting contract that's approved by the state. Um, this contract's been set by, has been set to the state highway and they've approved it for the amount of $108,800. Uh, this is a federal aid project, of course, for our CNO Trail Phase 2, which is going from Broadway to Mississippi Street. Being federal aid under this item, it's 90/10, so we are only going to be on the hook for $10,880 of this contract. Construction will begin sometime late this fall and finish up probably late September 2016.
Motion to approve, Mr. President?
Seconded by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mr. Hardaway for the approval of the Butler Fairman and Safer Contract for the CNO Trail. Any other discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, just a side note to Bruce, the actual construction is 100% money, Bruce?
No, the actual construction is 90/10.
90/10 CMAC?
Right. When we, when we first got this grant or the money and was awarded it, at that time CMAC was 100%.
Yep.
Uh, but shortly after we got it, we received a purchase order for the design at 100%, but then they changed the funding structure to 90/10.
There's.
So it's the construction part of it. The design part was 100, but the construction part's gonna be 90/10.
Does Pete know when they'll go out to bid on the construction then?
Construction, I think the letting is in October.
October, okay.
I'm passing the original contracts around, everybody can sign those too, please. Fire metal affairs, uh, I don't have anything.
I have also something else under.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's quite alright. Um, this, before school let out, there was 16 boxes delivered to the elementary schools under the Miraville School Corporation of the brochures. The children brought them home and the parents looked at them and this has been generating many phone calls on the children's activity in the Parks, um, department over the summertime. So this has been extremely beneficial. There are copies in the clerk treasurer's office for anyone who would like to see them or anything else. Also, um, next month is already our Independence Day Parade. That lineup will begin at 5:30, the parade will commence at 6:30 PM. It will again start from Guyson Funeral Home on 80th and Broadway and go to 67th and, um, Broadway. The theme this year will be honoring our firefighters and police officers with special emphasis on our late police officer Nicholas Schultz, who we will never forget. Um, that is all that I have under Parks and Recreation.
Anybody else in their Parks and Recreation? Seeing none, environmental affairs, Matt?
Um, obviously we had the abundance of rain recently, uh, over three and a half inches in a few hours on Sunday. A lot of the surrounding communities had a lot of, a lot of issues and we had a few isolated incidents, but otherwise, for the most part, we did very well. I just want to remind residents, uh, within our newsletter article, there are tips in here on what residents can do to, uh, protect their own home, including cleaning the gutters and downspouts, uh, checking their, um, their sump pumps and putting in check valves and things like that. So just want to remind all residents to, uh, look at your own properties, do what you can to protect yourselves from any inundation. Um, I received a, uh, an approval from IDM that we have to become a, an IDM clean community. Um, there's gonna be a ceremony, I'll let you know when that's scheduled. So, uh, this is a special IDM program that looks at the quality of life and we have a quality of life plan that I've written here with Bruce Spiers and, uh, there's certain things that we have to implement and report on each year, so, um, we'll let you know when the ceremony is for that. And I'll be meeting on Thursday with regards to 53rd Court and the plans. Uh, Richard, if you're available, uh, we're gonna meet at my office with Robinson Engineering, so.
What time?
Uh, 9 o'clock on Thursday.
Thursday.
That's for the planes of the, um...
In lieu of the lift station, looking at the gravity system for that particular area, yes.
Anybody else in their environmental affairs?
Yeah, I'd like to commend Matt yesterday as I was riding through my sub, through my ward, not subdivision, and looking at, uh, possible flooding areas. Uh, ran up on Matt cleaning stormwater drains that were, uh, plugged and I just want to, uh, commend him for doing that because we had a lot of, uh...
Rain fest.
A lot of rain and then we had a lot of drains that were, uh, plugged that needed to be, uh, tended to. You know, one of the things is that, you know, we, we need to encourage the residents that if they got one in front of their house, if, if they would go out there and rake it a little bit, that would help, but if they don't rake it, I appreciate what Matt did because otherwise we could, you know, we'd have got a lot of phone calls from people, uh, saying that, you know, we got standard water and it's just a matter of taking a rake and making a couple swipes and then you're, you're done with it.
Thanks, Matt. Thank you. And, and, you know, a lot of times I'll, I'll do reconnaissance after a storm. Last night I was out till about 9 o'clock at night, just checking areas and if I see anything really bad, I'll call Public Works or, uh, you know, some of my staff and have them address it, but, um, but I appreciate it.
Really, we've, we've come a long way since about six years ago, we'd had this kind of rain, everybody would have been out.
Every road would have been closed.
It's, we, we've made a lot of progress.
Thank you.
That's great.
I, I had one, uh, concern, um, 56 and Grant. Uh, I talked to Tony Green and, uh, his basement flooded. Uh, got ahold of a gentleman in county and, uh, he got ahold of Roosevelt Allen. Roosevelt Allen's gonna come out and do a looksee at that project 'cause, uh, it's some kind of plan that if it opens up at the prison, right at their, on Grant on 57, that that water will come through quicker and maybe not flood the residence engineering plan. So they're gonna come out and take a look at it and he told me he'd get back to me, Roosevelt Allen, so I think he's doing a good job. See what happens.
Anybody else in their environmental affairs? Seeing none, elections and public relations, Mrs. Miano?
It's, uh, a meeting was held with Hear Care Connections, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization established to meet the hearing needs for low-income children and adults currently based in northeast Indiana. They provide reduced fee hearing services on a sliding scale system based on household size and income, making hearing care more affordable and accessible for patients who could otherwise not afford it. Um, many have no insurance coverage or, um, insurance with little to no hearing coverage and some others have, uh, Medicaid. To qualify for the program, one was, one must meet certain financial criteria based on the federal poverty guidelines. We're in the process of establishing this service here in our town. Uh, hopefully July 1st, we're going to be opening it up and starting to take applications for that and the applications are, um, just several pages long. It also has on there how much they charge and what the reduced fee would be and that is all I have.
Anybody else in their elections and public relations? Seeing none, economic development, Mr. Pettit?
No report.
Utility liaison, Mrs. Barron?
No report.
Abandoned properties, Mr. Hardaway?
Thank you, couple of things. Um, we've got the, we've got a resolution coming, uh, when we get to resolutions, uh, a couple of properties, 5701, 5711 Connecticut, uh, that we, we would like to, uh, transfer over to Habitat for Humanities. Uh, and also I've spoken to Councilwoman Miano. There's a property at, um, 6746 Madison, uh, that's vacant. It's a lot and that's where the house blew up a few years ago and the, and the guy, uh, died. We, we would like to, uh, Mr. Bashimi, I, I think it's been on the tax hill a few times, you should have all the information in front of you.
Yeah.
And, uh, if at all possible, I will, if with Mrs. Uh, Miano's consent, I'd like to contact Habitat for Humanities and maybe possibly be able to donate that corner lot to them also. Uh, it's an ideal lot because it's got, uh, utilities already there and, and I'm sure that it's been on the tax hill a couple times already, uh, with no buyers.
Didn't, uh, the insurance company square up with us or something with whatever we had to do as far as knocking that down or did they take care of that?
I, I don't know, Gene can, Gene can answer the finances.
I mean, I, I don't, I mean, I wouldn't know that.
But there's.
The fire department, they had a payoff to the fire department for the service.
There's no lien on it right now with, with the information that I have here. So, I mean, like with Mrs. Uh, Miano's blessings, I would like to, at some point, John, after you do what you do, then we could maybe contact Habitat for Humanities and maybe offer up that property also. I, I think it, it benefits us when we can maybe get some use out of these properties rather than we, 'cause we, we're, right now we're mowing it, doing whatever we have to do anyway. So if we can get somebody else to take it.
It's now a vacant lot, the, uh, the structure has been.
Yeah, everything's gone. The only, only thing left standing there is a partial fence.
And, uh, who will make the contact with Habitat?
I will.
Alright.
That's not a problem.
And then, uh, once, if they confirm, then you want to proceed with this property in the same fashion as Resolution 1515 for 5701 Connecticut and 5709 Connecticut, those vacant lots also.
Yes, sir.
Alright, very good.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Did I, oh, yeah. Excuse me. On that subject, when you were asking about the insurance company?
Right.
There, there wasn't, if, if I recall, there wasn't any payout from the insurance company 'cause he didn't have blow yourself up on, on his insurance policy, so they didn't cover.
(laughing).
So, yeah, there was no insurance. It was the bank, I think, that had it for a while.
They took a building down and paid for it, right?
Well, we tore it down, but I can't, it's been so long. I apologize, I can't remember offhand. I believe, I believe we paid for it to have the building tore down. Yeah. 'Cause we had a contractor go out there and do it.
But I can't remember getting any money from anything like that, from any corporation or anything.
No.
Yeah, well, Mr. Bashimi's got all the information. If there's any liens or anything, we'll find out.
Sure. Uh, do you have a seminar or something coming up?
We've got, that's, uh, yeah, Friday at 9 o'clock, we're going.
Under the announcements?
That's under the announcements, that's why I didn't, I didn't mention it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Anything else?
That's, oh, no. Yeah, no, I, I would like to commend Catherine out of Gene's office and Vicky Bunnell out of, uh, building and planning for the work that they're doing on, uh, this abandoned properties thing. It, it's a lot of work and, uh, we are, uh, we met with Attorney Bashimi, uh, went last Wednesday to discuss, that's gonna be something coming before the council, hopefully, to, uh, an ordinance where we would like to sit fees, a registration fee for vacant homes where people that have these vacant, own them or real estate companies or whoever, where they would have to register these homes with the town and we would charge them an annual fee until they do something with it.
Dispose of the property. Important thing about the ordinance, uh, which is used in other communities in the state, uh, that Councilman Hardaway is recommending is that it would require, uh, where we can establish contact, that the mortgage company holder that's foreclosed register a local property management agent that would be a point of contact.
Right.
For us and for Vicky Bunnell and code enforcement and all purposes, rather than us chasing, uh, and attempting to make contacts with a absentee mortgage company that's in, uh, Dallas, Texas or someplace.
Right.
That won't respond to us.
Right, and this individual would have to be within 50 mile radius of Maryville for us. So that's gonna be coming as soon as he gets that together, then we will bring that to a workshop and discuss it and, uh, hopefully we can implement this thing and come up with a fee structure that will be beneficial to the town.
You've come a long way on this.
Yeah, it's, it's been a learning process.
Yeah, it's, it's.
It really is.
And I was reading that article too and, uh, and I think that that person that's coming on Friday is gonna be somebody that's gonna be helpful to us, that's something that's already working in other communities.
Right, me and Paul Scully.
All ideals, you know, that are, then trying to make it up on our own, you know?
We don't need to reinvent the wheel, yeah.
We can use it.
Right, yeah, no. We're looking for a great time Friday. Thank you.
Actually, uh, make a comment, I went to that meeting and, uh, it was a very big step from what Richard just talked about for the, uh, committee itself. Very big step.
General ordinances, uh, orders, ordinances. First reading ordinance is ordinance 15-13 and ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana appropriating additional monies within the Broadway Project Fund contractual of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana for the year of 2015, not included in the current budget.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mrs. Barron. Any discussion? Roll call, vote, Mr. Guernsey?
Spann?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Miano?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Garache?
Yes, motion carries six to zero. Ordinance 15-14, ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana appropriating additional monies within the motor vehicle fund of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana for the year of 2015, not included in the current budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mr. Spann. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, uh, roll call, vote, Mr. Guernsey?
Spann?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Miano?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Garache?
Yes, motion carries six to zero. Second readings, there is no second readings. Resolution, Resolution 15-15, Resolution of the Town, Maryville, Town Council authorizing acquisition of commissioners' tax sales cert, certificates for real estate property located at 5701 Connecticut Street and 5709 Connecticut Street for the purpose of assigning to Habitat for Humanity of Northwest Indiana.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mrs. Barron.
Are you from Habitat, ma'am? Yeah. No, okay, alright, just checking.
Wish I was, I could get my house fixed.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Resolution 15-16, a resolution of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana authorizing temporary loans to fill, fulfill monetary requirements.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Pettit.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hardaway for approval of 15-16. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Resolution 15-17, a resolution of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana authorizing the extension of current temporary loans to December 31st of 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mrs. Miano. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. 15-18, a resolution of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana transferring monies of the 2015 budget within certain categories.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mr. Hardaway for approval of Resolution 15-18. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. BZA action, we have no BZA action. Hope this is the approval of the inter-local corporation agreement for the Shared Ethics Advisory Commission on your, there was one in your package, but, uh, there was, uh, some error in that, so the inter-local agreement that you have that was on the basis here is the new inter-local agreement that we're gonna be approving.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway for the approval of the inter-local cooperation agreement for the Shared Ethics Advisory Commission as amended. Wait a minute, whose motion?
Hardaway made the motion, Pettit seconded.
Pettit seconded. Any discussion?
Um, further discussion, Mr. President, I see Mr. Bellamy's in the audience. Um, Mr. Bellamy, do we need to make an appointment to the commission? Refresh my memory from our workshop.
Um, actually tonight, I'm hoping you will approve not only the inter-local agreement but also the Code of Shared Ethics and Values. The two go together. Uh, and, and, uh, assuming those are approved, then yes, you need to appoint a private.
Elected official.
A, a private citizen to be on the commission.
Private citizen, okay.
And next time the commission meets is, uh, July 15th.
Now, not to get too technical, Mr. Bellamy, but we, in our assignments of some of these, is it an entire council? I guess, I guess, are we gonna sign it as an entire council or the council president, guys?
I, I think that we should sign, uh, assign them as an entire council where we can.
Except letters, should we accept letters like we do with the Police Commission and Plan Commission and BZA and then let Bruce collect the letters?
And let's have a conversation with whoever we want to put on this thing. This thing is too important to just put somebody on it.
Okay, okay.
In addition, uh, then a public official needs to be appointed to, um, the Board of Delegates, which controls the budget of the Shared Ethics Advisory Committee, uh, Commission. That's called the Board of Delegates. Uh, many times it's the clerk treasurer or the council president, uh, so that body meets only four times a year and I think their next meeting is in October.
Well, we call for the vote, Mr. President, on the first, on the interlocal.
The, in light of the comments by Mr. Bellamy-
We'll make them as a follow-up motion.
Well, this motion that's pending, I suggest be amended to provide that it's a motion to approve the interlocal agreement and the companion-
Oh, okay, I was going to make a separate motion for that, John.
Shared Code of Ethics. That would be fine by separate motion also. Either way, as long as both are approved.
How do you want to do it?
Do you want to amend your motion to Richard's motion?
I can amend it.
Yeah.
Let's amend it, amend the motion.
Second, second, it's amended.
Okay, so we're going to do both in one thing?
One thing.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Gernsy.
Span?
I'm staying.
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Miano?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Garage check?
Yes. Motion carries five to one extension.
And, um-
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that we are making an advertisement through Chad and Karen and Bruce. Any citizens that are interested in serving on the Shared Ethics Advisory Commission, please submit a letter to the town manager's office by June 30th, or, yeah, June 30th at 4:30. Is that enough time, Mr. Bellamy? Do we need the citizen now? When do we need him?
Well, you need to appoint somebody and our next meeting is July 15th and then the next meeting wouldn't be-
That's enough time. That's enough time. That'll stand, Mr. President. June 30th at 4:30, letters of interest, anyone wishing to serve on the, private citizens wishing to serve on the Shared Ethics Advisory Commission.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Who seconded it?
I did.
And council members, as I understand it, then, that appointment, if you have satisfactory applicants and choose to take action, the council could make that appointment and it's Tuesday, July 14th meeting, insufficient time for the citizen to participate in the meeting on the 15th.
In fact, Bruce, maybe if you would, as people come in with the letter, maybe remind them that the first meeting is going to be July 15th so they're ready, because we'll do it the night before and then they'll have to go to the meeting the next day.
That's good.
If you're successfully selected. And might I add, Mr. President, maybe we want to, as Mr. Bishimi pointed out with the calendar, look at a, John, I don't know if we do these in council workshop, if Tom can call a council workshop before to go through the letters?
You could do that, yes.
I don't know what you guys want to do.
Obviously, the official action, making the appointment would have to be done in-
Right, on the floor, but if we meet at 6 o'clock before that and go through the letters of interest, I don't know if you guys want to do that.
We got to do something, might as well do that.
Imagine that, we probably would want to-
Right.
So if we do it at 5 o'clock, they have a workshop before?
5 o'clock, 5:30? You cut into my nap time when you say 5:30.
Do we need an RDC, Bruce?
Yep.
Yeah, there you go.
Then we can decide.
Um, I don't believe so as of right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's play by ear and see how many applicants we get.
Yeah, see how many we get in.
All the time, then.
Right.
Chad and Karen, you got everything? Okay.
Okay.
Any new business?
Um, we need one more item, I believe, if Mr. Bellamy, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we need a delegate, one of the elected officials. Is that correct?
That's correct, for the Board of Delegates.
Don't everybody stand up at once?
I guess, you know, I'll do it since I'm the guy that's been aggravating you guys with this thing.
I make a motion, we appoint Richard Hardaway as the delegate from the town of Maryville to the Shared Ethics Advisory Board?
Board of Delegates.
Board of Delegates.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We get everything, Mr. Bellamy?
Sean? That's it. Excuse me. Counselor Sean? Maybe I suggest you do a background check on the applicants.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Background from the state of Indiana.
There you go.
Yeah, good idea, chief.
Always thinking.
You don't have to do one-on-me, chief.
Yeah, you might want to run that tomorrow morning.
Thank you, guys.
Any new business? Seeing none, public comment, at this time, we're going to open it up for public comment. I think Loz is trying to get up here.
He got me.
Take your time, Loz.
I will.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
I will. My name is Lois LeFevere. I've lived in my home on West 79th Place, moved in there in 1962 and are still there and we are staying and we're happy to see that new people are coming into our neighborhood. The street with come is wonderful. The people who helped avoid, they were up and down our street, but that was okay, they did a great job of not having people troubled. So that's one of the reasons I'm here tonight. Another one is just simply to thank people for being here. Because more and more, we see less and less people. The last time I was coming to meetings, there were a lot of people here. And my son, Rick, who lives with me, he and I share the, share a house. We, all of his brothers and sisters, they went other places, but he's still here with mom. So don't forget, someday he may show up here and he's kind of noisy, but that's okay. But really, that's all I wanted to do is say thank you and for all that you do. And it's nice to have streets. I wish we had sidewalks. The children, when they ride, when they go to the bus, they walk from the home down to Taney. And now it's school's over, so it doesn't matter. But I see them and our street is used as a traffic, you know, they just race through our, our street. And, you know, I've called about that before. What they do is they stop, it's a stop sign, and then they pick up the speed and by the time they're going by my house, they're going about 40 miles an hour. And our kids are in the street. I know children don't belong in the streets, but I also know that cars don't belong going 40 miles an hour where there's kids. And that is just really one of the things that I wish that we had. I know, I'm not blaming the police, I know everybody's got a big job and jobs to do and things to cover and those kind of things, but those are just things that, from time to time, somebody will go by my house, I'll say, "What the heck is that?" It's the radio, it's the boom, 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 you know, that kind of stuff. But that's really all I'm here tonight for is to thank you for all the things that you do. And I might come back. You know, I'm sure some of you remember my husband, he was kind of around a lot. But this past, probably, it's probably been about 12 weeks now, we had a water problem in our basement and it was in the sewer, it was not in the main sewer, but it was in the sewer that goes from our house. As of now, we're still waiting to get it put back together. Fortunately, it's insured, but we're out, we probably are going to have like 600,000, $600,000 in repair work. And we'll do it because we're staying, you know, and we have the coverage. So I, it's just, we'll stay for a while and when I can't stay anymore, don't be surprised if you see my son come by. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Loz.
And one other thing, I noticed that your minister didn't show up for, I do hold a certificate and liturgy, I don't want to do it all the time, but if you need somebody, I'd be happy to come over and do that sometimes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else on their public comment?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Can you please state your name and address for the-
Pearson, Curtis Pearson is my name, precinct amendment, Maryville 25, and Mr. Span is Councilman Ward. First of all, I'd like to commend y'all for all the good work that I'm seeing done out here too in Maryville. Looks good, looks great and people are really excited about all the new work and construction and streets and all that. And we'd like to get something out in our area too. But anyway, I have three concerns and not just me, but the people in my area. One is actually at Mr. Spire's, Bruce would probably be handling with me on this, 57th and Chase Street. That curve, that turn right there, that dip down, that turn right there is so broken down, cars have been just dropping down into it, you know, and it's been like that for quite a while. And we've had to get people pulled out of there and it's been going on for quite some time, you know?
You're talking about when you come up to the three-way stop, you're on 57th to make the right?
Yes, sir. And you try to make the turn, sometimes this person is turning and cutting in, you drop right in there. Allow a few cars that, you know, so it's, it's real bad, it's messed up pretty bad.
Pass it on to our Public Works Department, have them take a look at it.
Thank you, sir. Secondly, left turn signal, 57th and Chase Street, 57th and Cleveland Street. We talked about this before and I even went to the council, county council about this in particular. They reverted me back here to you guys. They said that it was an issue that we had to take up with it, you know?
Not our signal. Not our signal, it's Endo.
That's what Roosevelt told me.
Endo signal.
I went to him, I talked to him.
It's, you're talking about 57th Avenue- The food is a state highway.
57th Avenue in Cleveland, correct?
Yeah.
For the food market.
If that accident, State Route, get killed.
State Route 55.
Okay.
That belongs to Endo.
Yes, sir.
So what do we do in this situation?
It's not the county, you'd have to call Endo. That would be up to them to come out, decide if they thought it was necessary to put left turns.
So the town of Maryville has nothing to do with it?
Nope, not our signal.
I didn't know that's why I'm here to-
I got somebody from Public Works checking on it for me.
Now, it's great concern of a lot of people, I had a friend got killed there two years ago, I said, and there's a lot of accidents, they're always right there, you know, so that's-
I tried, I tried to get him on 61st and Cleveland, I tried to put in, a bus turn left in the one lane, it must go straight on the other lane, because a lot of times people coming up, two cars coming up and they'll go around and the guy goes straight. We, as a policeman, I used to come a lot of accidents here and I tried with the state, trying to get him to change it. God bless.
You always got a guy trying to make that light, you know, and making that light and they don't make the light. You had a right, a left turn signal there, the left people know when they can turn.
Right.
They wouldn't be getting wiped out by that light.
Not that he's dealing with the state on affairs like that.
So it's a big accident waiting to happen, you know, and it's really bad, big concern and whatever we need to do, you know, to fix that, you know, the people in the neighborhood would really appreciate it. So that's why I'm here for that. I talked with Mr. Span before about that and he said he would, you know, he said you would talk to, you know, whoever we can talk to about it. I got Rich looking into it, he hasn't got back to me, but I had the same problem on 65th. As you come out, it's real rough.
A while back, Mr. Pearson, we, when I, Rich and I first got on the council, Representative Dobus wanted us to take over, the state wants us to take over that road from 93rd all the way up to 53rd. And we said, we would take it over if you rebuild it on your dime and widen it and upgrade all the signals. Well, it had to be an all or nothing. Crown Point, Maryville and the county had to all agree to take the segment in. County didn't want to take the segment in north of 53rd Avenue. I remember when Councilman Shuteck was on the council, he wanted that road, but he wanted it widened and the state was willing to do it, the county wouldn't take theirs in because they said they would need two more trucks and more guys plowing it. So, you know, if the state wants to rebuild it, we would consider taking it into our inventory, you know, but they're going to have to upgrade that entire corridor. And which includes Mr. Span trying to get people out of Ensbroke over there. That was another one of the issues, making it four lanes, might be able to get them out of there easy.
That's what we went on and they shot us down. The last concern I have is for my precinct in itself, you know, some repairs need to be made out there. Of course, we talked about them and I haven't heard anything else back on that. Well, I called, but let's get together and let's go around and I get the addresses. Excuse me, what do you mean? You're talking about some addresses, right? No, I'm talking about the streets being repaired- Right.[1683.13]